Shalom, welcome to The Jewish View. My name is Rabbi Nachman Simon with the Chabados of Delmar, together with my co-host Mark Ronig of Statewide News Service and JBizTechFlely.com. We have a very, very special guest with us, Daniel Jack Flynn. Jack, welcome to The Jewish View.
Thank you for having me here, I appreciate it.
Well, you're in the Common Council in the 8th Ward. Just what are the geographical boundaries of the 8th Ward? Who do you exactly represent?
That's a very good question. I basically represent from Hackett, Whitehall, from Joanne Court, all the way down to New Scotland Avenue. Then from New Scotland Avenue, basically to the Bethlehem Line. That's basically the area. It's the second-largest geographic district in the...
And you have a large Jewish population in your district?
I do have a large Jewish population.
A lot of synagogues. And are you being sensitive when you go around asking for signatures on your petitions?
I am very sensitive when I go around the petitions. I know there are certain times I'm, you know, I'm very sensitive to go into. But yes, I usually do my petitions, usually Sunday night or Monday. As you know, this is the petition season, and I do go out a lot.
What committees are you on? Are there specific committees in the Albany Common Council, or certain issues that you have to deal with specifically?
I'm on the Parks and Recreation Committee.
Right.
I'm also on the Human Rights, Human Resources Committee.
Right. General Services, Health and Environment.
I'm on the General Services and Health Committee also. So landfill is a big issue coming up, and that's one of the issues. Parks and Rec, we do have two new commissioners for DGS, which I've dealt with a lot. And so far, I think he's doing an excellent job. Jonathan Jones is the Parks and Recreation Commissioner, who's got his hands full, let's just say that. You know, he's got some new programs coming up in the City of Albany, which I agree with. So hopefully, the implementation is good. But so far, everything's going well. And you know, it's been in six months, and I've learned a lot, and a lot of reading, and a lot of, and I'm doing.
Now, you went to CBA Hudson Valley, and U Albany.
Yes.
You had a criminal justice degree in Albany, at U Albany.
Yep.
And they're well, they're, that school's well-respected in the country for their criminal justice program.
Yeah, when I went to criminal justice there, it was the second-best school in the nation for criminal justice. John Jay was number one. I know the master's program at SUNY is, I believe, don't quote me.
Tops.
Is, was number one at the time I went to. But I did learn a lot. I went for Political Science also. That was my minor at SUNY Albany.
Well, there you went into that field, but you didn't go into criminal justice.
I didn't. My brother's actually an Albany detective, so he went into the criminal justice field. And he went to school for history at the University of Albany. But I did learn a lot about the criminal justice system, so I am very active with the police and all the...
But just like, you know, when you get into a major in college, and you find out that it's not exactly what you thought it would be, so you gravitate towards something else. Are you getting into the Common Council and finding it something different than what you thought it would be? And that you may not want, at 41-years-old, you might want to do other things with your life? And you may not want to go to all these meetings? And listen to all this blah, 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 blah?
Let me tell you something, I'm a great listener. And I do enjoy going, to answer first, your first part of the questions, it is more than people expect. You know, people think...
It is what?
There's a lot more for the Common Council than any person expects. I know people here that you just have to go to, you know, meet twice a month, you know? But when I got on, I was at every committee meeting. I was reading the Charter, reading the codes. I was going door-to-door. I mean, honestly, for the first six months, there's not a day that I'm, nothing going on. Especially, when I got in office, we had two major storms with the city. I was dealing with the issues with the residents of the 8th Ward, with the snow and the removal. You know, you don't realize how much of a job it is until you get there. It's one of those, you know, oh, it's an easy job. But then, when you get there, my mom can tell you. I get calls all the time about issues throughout the city. And I do attend a lot of events, not just in the 8th Ward. Because I feel, as representative of the City of Albany, I do go to every other event that I possibly can get to in the City of Albany. I'm just not about the 8th Ward. It's a city, it's a city-wide job. And I, you know, I've been to events, and they'll say, oh, why are you here? There's nobody, there's nobody from the 8th Ward at this meeting. How does it affect you? And I say, well, when I have to vote on a bill or legislation, I have to be aware of every community throughout the City of Albany, so I am informed about it.
That's great. I think that's wonderful. But as long as you don't ignore the meetings in your own district.
Oh, no, no, I do, I do attend neighborhood meetings.
Is it officially a part-time job, or a full-time job? How do they, you know, the people, how is it specified?
I believe it's specified as a part-time, 30-hour week.
Yeah, it's part-time because he can work, he can have another job and work elsewhere.
Yeah, I do work another job.
But the way you're working, you're making it like a full-time job, that's...
I personally make it a full-time job. I'm available after my job from 5:00 to 9:00 at night. On the weekends, I do a lot of reading. I do a lot of walking throughout the neighborhood, especially with the casino issue. When that issue came up, I was out for two and a half weeks, going door-to-door for two and a half hours, three hours a night, asking for people's opinion, because...
What's the salary for a Common Council, annual salary?
It's about $20,000.
$20,000. And then you have another job, working at the Albany County Board of Elections.
Right, that is correct.
And what do you do for them?
My main job is there, I designate all the polling sites for the county. I also assign all the inspectors that work throughout the county. I train all the inspectors about the policies and procedures of the election process. I also, in part of the outreach program, I do go to like the high schools, senior areas, citizens, and try to inform people about the voting process.
That's good.
I do that. I was just at Albany High School with some of the kids.
And that's a good way for you to get out and get your name known also. And, you know, just make the connection like you were a Common Councilman, and you're also out there with Board of Elections. There is a tie, although this is County Board of Elections, so you do, you do go beyond the City of Albany.
Yes, it's county-oriented, and, yes. I, you know, I know when I ran for office, people thought there was a conflict. But, you know, me running at the Board of Elections, I, really helped me learn about a lot of the issues, because I do a lot of, get phone calls from...
Well, at least your petitions will be legal.
My petitions will be correctly done, let's just say that. I don't believe they will be challenged.
They won't be challenged, exactly.
Because I know exactly who to get them from, how to fill them out correctly. You know, as Mark probably knows, you know, you've got to fill it out correctly, legally, make sure everything is done correctly. So I do have a background in that, so it helps me a lot.
Maybe, you know, you do a part-time job, like with sports, with kids?
Yes, I do. I've been a basketball official for over 20 years. Started when I was 20, in the high school level. I've now moved up to Division III in junior college. I referee, you know, Skidmore, Union, St. Rose, Vassar. I do get a schedule, which I do as a hobby. And, you know, I do get a little extra money for it. But it is a hobby for me. It keeps me motivated and in shape to...
Can you maybe connect all three jobs together? Maybe, you know, like a Common Council referee and...
I can say this, being a referee has actually taught me a lot about the Common Council, to listen. Because when I take the court on a game, I know that, at the end of the game, you're going to have 50% like me, and 50% don't agree with me. Also, kind of the same when it's dealing with politics. You know, I may vote on an issue, some will like, not like it, and some will like it. So I kind of balance the referee and the politics the same. You know what I mean?
You know, it reminds me, so many years ago, of course, I say I'm 29-years-old. But in any case, when I was a child, they said, what is the most mature level on the playing field? Like the players, the managers, the umpires? The answer was the umpires, the referees, because, and you kind of explained it, because it's, in a way, easy. This is my team, and I like it. But, you know, someone who can keep an even balance and be mature about it, just saying, hey, there's losers, and people don't like me, and they don't fall apart. Oh, you don't like me, what should I do, you know?
No, at the end of the day...
Have to be thick-skinned, and you do the right thing.
Before the game, a lot of people don't know this, but before a basketball game, me and the other referee talk for 30 minutes about game management. You know, make sure the game is fairly run, and that's where I go. And at the end of the day, honestly, I, it doesn't matter who wins or loses, I just treat it as a fair game. And when I get off the court, we evaluate how we did. You know, was there a call that we liked, you know, we should have, you know, what did you think about this call? So we do get, sometimes, at the end of the game...
You do an analysis, a post-game analysis.
Analysis, and it only makes you better. It's kind of the same with government.
So, yeah, go ahead, finish.
Same with government, you know, at the end of the day, you know, did I write for, did I vote for something for the right reason? Did I say, oh, you know what, maybe I shouldn't have voted for that? It does happen, you know, sometimes you second-guess.
Now, the Albany Common Council is all Democrat.
Yes, it is.
But you don't, I mean, you have a position open for minority leader. So shouldn't there be someone there that should take the post of minority leader, just to be the opposition, loyal opposition?
I wish there was.
There was, okay.
I really, you know, I hate to say this, but I do, you know, but I will say this, on the Common Council, even though we all are Democrats, we all do have our own philosophies of how certain things should be run.
Fight amongst yourselves.
We do fight amongst ourselves, so we don't need another party to fight within our, you know what I mean, with us. You know, if you go to a meeting, we do have some debates over issues, even though we're all Democrat, you know?
Now, there was a mayor of Albany who was in office as long as you're old. I mean, 41-years, Arastus Corning was mayor of Albany.
That's right.
And, you know, there was a time when he appointed, he picked people to be on the Common Council. And they, there was never a no vote until...
There was never a no.
Like the 1990s.
Right. Politics has changed tremendously since those days.
So there's never, that was the first no vote?
Back then, there was never really primaries.
Right, oh, no.
There was no primaries. Now, we've come to a new age.
Would you welcome a primary for the 8th Ward?
I did, yes. And I, and I was actually glad there was a primary. I ran against Lenny Recutie as a primary.
Yeah, but I'm saying, would you, as an incumbent, would you welcome a primary?
Absolutely. I think having primaries is good. It made me stronger, it made me go, it made me go four months, go door-to-door and meet the people, listen to their concerns. You know, if you don't have a primary, you're like, okay, I don't need to go door-to-door from the months of May to...
Because the primary is the general election.
And Albany people don't realize that, but in Albany, the primary is the general election. Yes, it really determines the elections.
That's right.
I do like primaries, and I do hope I, you know, if somebody wants the primary again, I appreciate it.
Are you friends with Lenny? Are you...
Yeah, oh, absolutely. I've known Lenny for years, absolutely, yep.
So that was a friendly, scoring match?
Very friendly. We didn't, it was a very friendly race, you know what I mean?
Okay.
We talked before.
You talked after.
We actually talked before, and we talked after.
Okay.
Absolutely, he called me, congratulated me, very appreciative. Actually saw him last week.
Okay, that's good.
And we talked, and you know, Lenny has a lot of knowledge of what's going on in City of Albany.
Right, yes, he does.
He's a very smart guy, and I welcome anybody's input of any issues.
On certain issues, let me ask you, because you brought up the casino issue before.
Right.
Now that it's out of the hands of the City of Albany, and you created this Committee of the Whole.
Right.
Which I thought was kind of funny, because it's like every member of the Common Council was on this Committee of the Whole.
Well, we had it established.
Why not just take it up in conference, in, you know, in your conference before? Why did you need to create a Committee of the Whole?
Well, we had a Committee of the Whole so we could have public comments and everything. It had to be, you know what I mean? I agree.
Isn't that silly?
No, I agree. I think we could have just talked about it, we could have talked about it amongst ourselves during the caucus.
Right.
And just said, we're going to talk about the casino for a little while, absolutely. Obviously, the Committee of the Whole adjusted my schedule, because I had to attend all these meetings, so it was...
I just found that hilarious, that...
Yeah, we really could have talked about it amongst ourselves on Wednesday before, or, you know, we could have talked about it in the Finance Committee.
So what was your position? How did you feel? And how do you feel now that the casino issue is out of the hands of the City of Albany?
Well, it's not officially out yet.
Well, you know where it's trending. So will, I mean, even if it's in Rensselaer or House Cave, or wherever it's connected, do you think Albany City will still get a bump from, revenue bump from this?
Well, I know, I've, I was told today that the mayor met with some of the casino people. I don't know much about the details about it. But I do, I did hear through a few phone calls I received that the mayor did meet with either Flum or one of the other casinos today.
Flum, Flum.
Yeah, and I haven't heard much what happened in those meetings. But, like I said, when the casino debate did come out, I went door-to-door and asking people their views on it, for, against.
Personally, I'm against casinos. You know, I think you can make money better than gambling.
Right.
But even then, I mean, there is issues about it that some of the casinos aren't even making money. And now, there's going to be an influx of so many more casinos around the area. You know, it's just how many, how many pieces can you divide up a pie?
Right.
You know, how many people are going to go gambling? And they have here a few hours, every few hours, Connecticut also. It's not only New York, and New Jersey, of course. So, you know, it doesn't guarantee any big money.
And it doesn't, the law, if I understand, is not saying there has to be one in this area. So it gives us the opportunity to have one. So is there a possibility that there may not be one in this region? I think there is a possibility.
Very slim.
Very slim. It is very slim.
I think slim to none, and slim just left town.
But I will say...
I think that, that's my personal opinion.
Right.
Because there's just too much money surrounding that. But I was going to say, where's the best location where Albany could still have some spin-off and some spin-off revenue from a casino?
I think Rensselaer or East Green Bush are the two best places, you know?
We're not going to really see anything if it's in Schoharius-Connecticut County?
No, we're not going to see nothing. The only thing is, if it isn't Rensselaer, East Green Bush, we could get people getting jobs in those areas now. You know what I mean?
Without moving to Rensselaer County.
Without moving to Rensselaer County, because I don't believe there's a residence requirement for the casinos.
Right.
You know, so we could get some spin-off job creation, some people in, you know, in the area to go over there. So hopefully that, and hopefully that'll generate some economics for the city, because they're getting jobs over there. That's, that's, that's a hope, you know? People that are unemployed, hopefully they can get jobs there.
How do you feel about a casino? Do you go to Turning Stone or...
I will say, I have been to casinos, yes. I have been there. I've been to Turning Stone. I've been to Vegas. I've been to...
But are you like...
I haven't been to a casino in about eight years or so.
Do you bet thousands of dollars?
No, 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 no. I go what I feel is reasonable within my budget to spend.
You know, I tell anybody who goes to a casino, I tell them, you've got to give 10% to charity over here, at least. You know what they counter me? They say, and you'll take 10% of my losses too, Rabbi, right?
I do agree, yes. But I do believe, you know, going to a casino is one's personal choice.
But what's, yeah, so are you, so you just, what do you like about it? What games do you play? Do you like the environment? Do you like the ching, 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 ching?
Well, I don't have, me personally, I don't have an addiction, let's just say that.
No, no, no.
I like basketball. Like I said, I haven't been to a casino probably eight years.
Yeah, but I'm just asking.
But I will go with $100 or $200 to play, and just play for fun, relaxation.
What do you play?
I play blackjack.
That's what you, that's your game of choice?
And I, yeah, I believe it's the game of choice, because it's the one game that you can make an informed decision what to do. You know what I'm saying? Lenny's just the ball.
Well, it's just a ball.
You know, if I get a 12, I have a choice. Do I want to hit, or do I not want to hit?
Okay.
So some of the decision-makers in your hands, rather than throwing a ball around or doing a scratch-off.
A slot machine.
Or a slot machine. At least, so at least I can make an informed decision of my...
Let me ask you another topic, another question, about community policing.
Yes.
Because that's been a big issue in the district and throughout the city.
It has been.
So tell me your take on community policing, and what you know about it, and what you think the public should know.
That's an interesting question you brought up, because today for lunch, I met with a former police, no, it's a true story. I met with a former police officer for 30 minutes. And I asked him, which review is on community policing? And community policing isn't something that's overnight going to occur. It's a long process that's going to occur. We actually had a meeting at Monte Cristi about a month ago, for the Act Back about community policing. We actually got about 50 to 60 residents in the community to talk about their issues.
But what's your thoughts on it?
My thoughts are, at my days at SUNY Albany, I will say, we did a lot of community policing, and we looked at research based on Kansas City, whether it was working, whether crime rate has gone down, whether there hasn't been an increase or decrease in crime. I do like the idea that the police officers are becoming more engaged with the community. I do. But one of the problems I do have is, if police officers do get a promotion within their policing, let's say you're at an area for six months, and you're finally getting to know the neighborhoods. And then, all of a sudden, there's an exam for sergeant, and we're now taking that police officer off the community. You know, I wish there was more incentives to keep them there if it's working. Because I've heard, I've already heard that, you know, I was at a meeting about a week ago, and they were talking, somebody brought that up. Well, what if the police officers keep getting moved, and they're...
Revolving door.
Revolving door in the community? Is that really community policing? You have both philosophies that'll say that now that the whole community, the police is doing a lot of community, that the newest one will know about community policing. So I wish there's incentives to keep that officer there. So if it's working, I mean, I would hate for my community that there's an officer there. You get to know them on a first-name basis, they know you. Then, all of a sudden, they say, hey, Jack, I just passed the sergeant's exam. I'm now moving out. You've got a new officer coming in. I would be like, as a constituent, I'd be like, oh, he's such a great guy, now we're losing him. So, so that's one of, that's, I guess that's a minor issue I have, if they're going to keep revolving the door with these community officers. But it's going to take a while, you know, it's a long process. But I, I don't know what the crime rate is right now in the City of Albany.
Yeah.
But I, you know, I am a little concerned of, you know, the shootings that have occurred so far.
In the South End and Auburn Hill.
South End. And I know there's a lot of community policing going on there right now.
But the 8th Ward?
Well, the 8th Ward, as you probably know, we had one of our first, I say homicides, in Woodside, New Scotland.
Right, that was a Jewish family too, yeah.
That was an isolated incident with the home care worker. No, but the 8th Ward doesn't have many crimes that really make the news. But one of our biggest concerns is, you know, speeding. You know, I can bring up the red lights, you know?
Bicycle thefts.
You know, bicycle thefts, people breaking into houses in the 8th Ward. So I try to tell people, just because you think you live in a nice area, you still got to lock your doors.
Okay.
You know what I mean? Because criminals are smart, they know.
So let me ask you this other question about the neighborhood associations. You have Crestwood, Harding is part of Crestwood, right?
Harding is technically part of the Crestwood neighborhood.
Crestwood neighborhood, so you've got Crestwood, and then you have the Whitehall Neighborhood Association.
Whitehall.
Which doesn't really meet. They have a Whitehall Neighborhood Watch, but the Neighborhood Association, per se, doesn't really meet.
Yeah, one of my goals is to make sure that every street in the 8th Ward becomes an association somehow. So that's going to be one of my goals, is to make sure...
I'm on board with that.
I, I know you are.
Okay.
That's my goal, because down near Wood Terrace, that area, and I'm trying to form black parties and things going on down that area.
Okay.
And that's one of the things I ran on. I want to make sure that every year, at least, every street has a black party, some type of community-oriented event.
Do you know, I had to join the Heldenberg Neighborhood Association just to feel like I have a neighborhood association. And they're just on the other side of Hackett Boulevard from me. And, because I don't have a neighborhood association.
Well, our goal is to get one.
We started it, but then it fell apart.
Yeah. The goal is to, hopefully, we can get one in every, every, every area should have a community or neighborhood association in the City of Albany, somehow.
Okay, I agree with you.
That's my goal, is to do that in the summer, is go out, have, like I said, the community parties.
Speaking of your goals, are you going to term-limit yourself? Or are you planning another 41-years, where I'll talk to you, and you'll still be in this position?
No, my goal is to do what I can on the Common Council, to achieve as many goals as I can on a Common Council level. And we'll see what happens from there.
Well, this is like the revolving door. You're going to go somewhere else. We're going to say, we love you so much. What are you, what are you going somewhere else for?
Well, it's like when you get...
It's like when you get your degree in, for associates, you move to the next level.
And then you go to a master's degree.
Well, that's what they say in the community policing.
Yes, that's, you're right, it's about community policing. My goal now is to learn as much as I can about the 8th Ward, the Charter, the codes, that I can do.
Okay.
And if I feel I haven't achieved what I want, then I will run again for the, for another term. Four years, to learn more, to the best I can. But I've lived in Albany 28-years, I have a lot of passion for the City of Albany. I've lived in the 8th Ward most of my life. And my kids have gone to school. In Monte Cristi, I graduated from St. Catherine, CBA. So I do have a lot of passion, and my goal is to make Albany a better city.
Okay.
Moving forward.
Well, there you go.
In the 8th Ward, with the neighborhood associations.
So let's talk about the red light cameras. Fill the audience in on what the red light cameras are, and where in the 8th Ward should one go?
Well, we, we did pass a home rule that allowed the Assembly and the Senate to pass a red light cameras where they're going to be in the City of Albany.
And they did.
They finally passed it on the last day, Friday.
Right.
One of the last things on the agenda. If there, if there's going to be one in Albany, in the 8th Ward, I suggest we have one on the corner of Hurst and New Scotland, and one on the corner of Whitehall. Not that we have a lot of red lights.
No, but...
But Whitehall and New Scotland is a pretty dangerous area, as, you know, I can sit there...
But Stewart's is there, and the Amador Home.
Amador Home, a lot of traffic goes through there. Amador Home. A lot of traffic goes through there. And my concern is when people go down Whitehall Road and take a right on New Scotland and take a right, they go through that red light a lot. And I've seen a lot...
Well, it's a right on red. You're allowed to do right on red.
Well, you have to at least stop.
Yeah.
And then go.
Stop? What's that?
Yeah, you have to stop. Your wheels actually have to come to a stop, the axle, and then you, you go. But I don't wanna see an accident occur.
Right.
As a result of that.
But there was already an accident of someone crossing that intersection and someone was killed. Someone from Saint Sophia's was crossing.
How long ago was that?
Two, three, about three years ago.
Was it three years ago? Right on, yeah.
Six in the morning.
So that, that's a big area right there.
Yeah.
Uh, Hurst, I believe all the, all the cameras should be near schools. You know, if we're gonna, if we're gonna make this about public safety rather than dollars, they should be around areas where we have a lot of, uh,
Well, you know what I see?
Kids and seniors walking.
You know where the Ash School is?
Sure do.
Well, they have that oval, that half oval, the half circle.
Yes, they do.
And they have the, the traffic light in between.
You're saying people take a right and go around it?
And they go through the school, yeah, oval, and then they avoid the light.
I see. I've never seen it. I, I know you're saying, I've never seen anybody do that, but I'm guessing people have done.
I have seen that.
Yeah.
And I want, and if I ever have a camera, dashboard cam, I'll be able to show you.
That's actually a law, avoiding a camera.
It's a law. It's against the law.
It's almost like, you know, you go through the mobile on Delaware in, uh, Whitehall.
That's right.
You know, I know somebody that actually got a ticket going through, uh, over there.
Good, good.
Good policing. They did get some money. It was somebody I knew.
So do you...
And they told me about it.
And they got your wag of the finger.
It happened a few years ago.
So where was, um, so, so the red light cameras, you think is a good idea? You don't think it's, uh, too intrusive?
I'm starting, I'm starting to do a lot of research on it now that I know it's definitely on, on the table.
Yeah, right.
You know, before I, you know, I did talk a lot of, and I talked to some attorneys, I talked to some political operatives involved. I talked to union members of the Police Department, asking their views and, uh, a lot of people were reluctant about it, you know? The question I have is, is it really a public safety issue? Uh, I need somebody to show me data that shows that red lights, going through red lights cause accidents. Me personally, I've never seen one. People go through red lights all the time and there's never a consequence, luckily, right?
If I go at three in the morning, I'll, but nothing good happens after two in the